Back it's good. All right. All right, good evening. Welcome to the October fourteenth meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
J R T S.
Here.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Cern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and first up tonight, we will be starting out with awards and recognition. And first up is Matt Sloan for the two thousand twenty-five Voice of the Children Award.
Mayor, Council. Sergeant Matt Sloan received the two thousand twenty-five Voice of the Children Award presented by the Child Advocacy Center. Sergeant Sloan is widely regarded throughout his profession as a fierce advocate for the protection of children. He frequently has been recognized for his outstanding dedication, collaboration, and impact in protecting children and investigating child abuse crimes, not only in Nixa but across southwest Missouri. In May two thousand twenty-four, Sergeant Sloan led an investigation into a disturbing case which involved a sexual relationship between a foster parent and a teenage foster child. And despite the clear exploitation, Sergeant Sloan identified a critical gap in Missouri law which did not explicitly prohibit such relationships. His proactive outreach to Senator Mike Moon, coupled with his detailed brief, underscored the need for legislative reform to protect foster children. Sergeant Sloan proposed actionable solutions which led to a change in state law to protect the children in foster care from these abuses. Sergeant Sloan couldn't be with us tonight. It's actually his anniversary, and there's an old saying that says, happy wife, happy life.
Definitely a good choice on his part. Thank you very much. All right, and next up is Mr. Brent Forgy for the Optimist Club two thousand twenty-five Hero Award and Enoch B. Morlock Award.
Mayor, Council, Officer Brent Forgy was presented with the two thousand twenty-five Hero Award for his outstanding service to his community. This recognition is part of the Optimist Club International Hero Day, which honors those who have made significant contributions to our country's history, culture, and development. The award was given by Pat Briggs and Ginny Sleeth of the Springfield Summit Optimist Club. Officer Forgy was also honored in August with the Enoch B. Morlock Award, presented annually by the U.S. Attorney's Office Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee. The Enoch B. Morlock Award recognizes individuals with outstanding moral character and service to law enforcement and the community outside of law enforcement. We are immensely proud to have Officer Forgy as a member of our organization. His dedication, exemplary service, and commitment to upholding the values of integrity and community engagement reflect the highest standards of our profession. This recognition is a testament to Officer Forgy's outstanding contributions to both law enforcement and the community he serves.
This is the year of Officer Forgy getting every award available. Well deserved, well deserved. Before we go on, there is one other recognition. So our mayor, Jared Giddens, was recently awarded with the Missouri Public Utility Alliance Public Official Award. Doug Colvin has some more information on that.
Thank you, Aaron. The Public Official Award was established in two thousand and two to recognize service to MPUA by elected and appointed officials at state and local levels. The award is given to someone who has made substantial contributions towards MPUA and municipal utility goals, towards enhancing MPUA's statewide influence, and towards enhancing their community's way of improving and supporting their local hometown utility. During the presentation, the master ceremonies Chuck Bryan of Carthage, I'm just going to read from his comments. Since the beginning of his public service career, Mayor Jared Giddens has been a steadfast advocate for hometown utilities. His commitment began during his time as Nixa City Councilmember and Nixa Utilities Liaison and continues today in his role as mayor. Mayor Giddens consistently promotes the value of locally controlled utilities and the support of public utility associations such as MPUA, not only in Nixa but at the county, state, and national levels. He is a familiar face at community events where he takes every opportunity to emphasize the importance of local control and celebrate the accomplishments of Nixa Utilities. Over the past several years, Mayor Giddens has deepened his engagement with state legislators and members of the federal delegation, working to advocate for policies that protect and empower local utilities. Mayor Giddens is an active participant in the American Public Power Association's legislative rally and national conferences where he continues to expand his knowledge, strengthen his advocacy efforts. At home in Nixa, he regularly brings forward local concerns and defends issues impacting hometown utilities, always with the goal of preserving local values and control. He's a vocal supporter of Nixa's mutual aid partnerships and takes great pride in the city's continued status as reliable public power or RP3 communities. Mayor Giddens' dedication to public utilities is clear, and his leadership continues to position Nixa as a model for excellence in municipal utilities. Mayor Giddens is the fourteenth person in the twenty-three-year history of the Award of Excellence which is not given every year. And I'd like to recognize Mayor Giddens for his accomplishment and express my appreciation for his work to support all of Nixa's hometown utilities. Thank you.
That wasn't on the agenda. All right. Well, thank you all. So next up, we have a presentation. I'm really happy she's able to be here. Katie Schmidt with Gold Star Mother and Family Day. We recently did a proclamation, and she was unable to make it. And so we're lucky enough to have her here this evening to tell us a little bit about the Gold Star Mother and Family Day. The microphone is all yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the September twenty-third meeting, Mayor Giddens made a proclamation honoring Gold Star Mother and Family Day. Before understanding what the Gold Star family is, we have to look at the Blue Star. The Blue Star flag, also known as a service flag, is a symbol of pride for families with members in the United States Armed Forces, with each blue star representing one living service member. Designed by Captain Robert L. Queazer during World War I after two of his sons enlisted in the military. The official Department of Defense authorized banner features a white field, a red border, and one or more blue stars. The practice of displaying these banners became widespread during World War II, with many families creating flags by hand. The American Legion Auxiliary helped reintroduce the Blue Star banner to Americans following the September eleventh terrorist attacks. Often, the question has been asked, who is a Gold Star Mother in a family? Well, I can tell you it's a club no one wants to join. I know I have been personally approached and asked, what makes you a Gold Star Mother? I calmly, and sometimes not so calmly, reply, my son's death in Iraq. Have a nice day. But during the early days of World War I, as I previously stated, the blue star on a field of white bordered by red was used as a window banner to represent each person in the family serving in the military of the United States. As the war progressed and sacrifices were made by those heroes who died, others who succumbed to their wounds or diseases or were missing in action, there came about an accepted use of the Gold Star. In nineteen eighteen, President Woodrow Wilson approved the request to add the Gold Star over the Blue Star to symbolize a service member lost in the line of duty. This Gold Star was superimposed upon the Blue Star on a window banner. The Gold Star represents the honor and glory accorded to the soldier, sailor, marine, or airman for his supreme sacrifice and offering to his country, their last full measure of devotion. The pride of the family in this sacrifice was portrayed by these signs of mourning. Gold Star Mother Day, as it was originally called, is observed annually on the last Sunday of September to honor the families of the U.S. service members who have died in the line of duty. The day provides an opportunity to show gratitude, remember fallen heroes, and support their surviving family members. We have Memorial Day to remember the fallen hero, but to Gold Star families, every day is Memorial Day. The first Gold Star Mother Day was designated by a joint congressional resolution in nineteen thirty-six. In two thousand and eleven, President Obama expanded the observation to include all families of the fallen, not just mothers. He included fathers, siblings, grandparents, aunts, uncles, all family. So how can you show support to a Gold Star family? Simple. Honor and remember their fallen. If you see the Gold Star banner or the Gold Star lapel pin, approach the person or knock on the door and simply say, I saw your pin. I saw your banner. Would you share your loved one with me? Trust me, us Gold Stars will go on for hours telling you the whole story. I personally have been approached about my lapel pin, and I explain the significance, and just six words mean the world as they walk away. The simple, thank you for your family's sacrifice. That stranger learned about a twenty-two-year-old man that gave his life so he can live free. Now let me tell you a little story. Andrew Travis Engstrom, born June fourteenth, nineteen eighty-five. Grew up with a younger brother, and the two would go outside and do the normal things brothers do, ride bikes, find sticks or broomsticks, and play soldier. He went on to school and in the fourth grade came home and said, Mom, I know what I want to do when I grow up. I said, what? He said, Mom, I want to find the cure for AIDS or cancer. We never got to discuss it again. Then on to high school where Andrew became part of the J R O T C program. In two thousand and one, Andrew was a sophomore in high school when the attacks of the World Trade Center happened. My son came home from school angry and looked me in the eyes, and you're going to have to pardon my language, but these are his words. Mom, I want to join the military. Some coward-ass bastard attacked my country, and I want to defend her. I didn't think anything of it as he still had almost three years of high school left. Andrew graduated in two thousand and four and went on to college, but came home on Christmas break and said, I'm dropping out of college. It's just not for me. And he did. About two months later, he and his best friend went to the movies. Came home giggling like a couple of schoolgirls, and Andrew said, Mom, guess what we did today? I said, you went to the movies. No, Mom, I joined the Army. Andrew left about next week for basic training. Andrew graduated basic on his twenty-first birthday and from advanced individualized training on September eleventh, two thousand and six. He was assigned to the First Battalion Eighty-Second Field Artillery Regiment, First Brigade Combat Team, First Calvary Division out of Fort Hood, Texas. Two weeks after arriving at Fort Hood, he called home. He didn't want to talk to me. He demanded to talk to his stepdad. After the call ended, I learned my twenty-one-year-old son was deployed to Iraq. We last saw Andrew in March of two thousand and seven when he came home from R and R. Long story short, Andrew was killed on July fourth, two thousand and seven, in Ahitashi, Iraq. Andrew's death while active duty made me a Gold Star Mother. My youngest son, Andrew's brother Adam, a Gold Star sibling. Andrew's father in Wisconsin, a Gold Star father. So on the last Sunday, oh, I'm sorry. All of our extended family, grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, nieces, and nephews, all Gold Star family. So on the last day, on the last Sunday in September, we remember and honor all of these family members. In the state of Missouri alone, an exact number is not available, but is estimated at over fifteen thousand Gold Star families in the twentieth century. On the last Saturday in September, Silver Dollar City invites all Gold Star families to come and enjoy the park at no cost to them. At the end of the day is a memorial service where the names are read. In two thousand and twenty-four, there were over three hundred families honoring their fallen at Silver Dollar City. So yes, we do walk among you. We don't always point out that we're Gold Stars, but unless you see the pin or the banner, you don't know. I am not standing here to gain recognition because I am a Gold Star Mother. I am here so other Gold Star families are also remembered and honored on the last Sunday of September. Thank you.
Mrs. Schmidt, I'd love to present you with this. All right, moving on to the visitors section. Have anybody signed up?
Kelly Dune. Hello, thank you.
Hi.
My name's Kelly Dunn. I am representing, last night I was at a meeting with Bustle in the Forest Heights regarding the facility there, and I'm basically here, I'm looking for direction. I was listening to a lot of the people there, and I have a personal interest in one of the properties there that are being affected. I don't want to go into all the details because I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I am looking for direction to help guide. I work in the builder business, but I work out of Texas. So I think by my being there was kind of helping to be an advocate, to speak to the people so that they understand the processes of what's going on with this sewer that has collapsed and all of the repairs that are having to be done. I have spoken extensively with Justin Orr, who's the facilitator. He's an absolute, the guy is a gem. He is very outspoken. He has helped me to help understand what the processes were, which has made it easy for me to be able to kind of help advocate for some of these people. But I sat there last night, and the way that I want to explain it is between the builder and the city, there's a lot of discrepancies going on with timelines. And I get it, I get both sides, I get the timelines. But people don't, the people that were there are being affected. There are people who are losing their homes, they've sold their homes. There's a woman that was pregnant due in two months. There are people that are coming, personally, my friends are coming from California, and it's just been a complete debacle. So what I'm asking is, is there any way that we could maybe create a meeting where these people can come in and basically explain it to them in layman's terms? Because they're basically being told, as of last night, it could be six months, it could be a year. They don't want to give up their homes. They're being told that they can leave their, you know, their, get out of their purchase contracts or they can wait the process out. But then there's nothing guaranteed because what they're hearing is that the city is behind the control of all of the certificates of occupancy. All I'm asking is, is there a way that someone can help me to understand what exactly that process is and what the timelines are so that I can help? That's all I'm really doing, is I'm just trying to help be an advocate for some of these people that are... It's the holidays are coming, and they're all at fear that they're not going to be in any homes. And I, and I've heard names, I have all my notes, but what would your recommendation be?
That's a great question. And I'm glad you asked it because there has been a, a lot of misinformation spread. It was, it was very surprising to us that a sewer infrastructure did not last a year. And so I, I'm honestly amazed at, because you know, government always moves slow. This has been extremely fast. And, and you're right, Mr. Orrf has been absolutely amazing. And I heard a lot of things today after that meeting last night that were disheartening, to say the least. Talked to Mr. Orrf this morning, and I, exactly what you said, I love the idea. We just need to schedule it. We want to do a, call it a town hall, whatever you want to call it, but get everyone in here and talk to them. We talked to a lot of the residents over there. You know, there are, there are five families that
That are homes.
Were already in their homes that
Yeah.
Have no water and sewer, and it's the worst possible thing you could ever think of. And, you know, getting to talk to them and hear what they're going through, terrible.
I work for a builder and I have been, and, and the thing is, from the very beginning, from the very beginning of signing a contract, it has been a complete debacle. And I've been in this industry for twenty-five, thirty years, and I have never seen any of the lack of communication or even in the meeting last night, it just felt like it was making yourself a victim. And it's like, why are you doing that? Let's make it about how do we get these people? I mean, that's my goal is, my core value is I want to make sure that these people have the absolute design experience for buying a home, their first home, their forever homes. And Nixa's a beautiful city. I mean, I have been working with my best friend for, for over a year to choose to come to Nixa. And I just told her today, I said, you do not want to walk away from it. I live in, well, I won't tell you where I live because I'm not supposed to be speaking, but I am representing that home. Yeah. Sorry.
It was nice speaking to you.
I'm in the country, so I figure I'm part of Nixa. Nixa's my backyard.
That's okay. You're good, you're good.
My, my intention is in the right place. But I do, I, you know, people in this industry, they don't understand the complexity. And I get it, I know the hard work. And I just spoke to Justin just before I came here, and he spent the time with me on the phone. So I, I greatly appreciate it, I appreciate him, your guys' time. I would like to be an advocate for helping to make sure and I can get on the phones with people and explain the details of what it is that needs to be done. Because somebody had said last night, oh, I spoke to Justin, and he said it was two weeks. I said, no, no. That is not the two weeks.
That two is two weeks, yeah.
The first part of it is two weeks. Then you've got to go through all of these other processes and stuff. So if I can find somebody that I can maybe, I'm a peacemaker. I want this done, I just want these people to feel good about their homes. We love the city of Nixa, I come here and hang out all the time. So if somebody can, I can share my number or something to be able to do that, I think it's a great idea.
And Justin did talk to me about, about you coming here tonight. Crazy that Ozark would come over here to keep peace, that's just...
I need to see people.
Oh, I'm kidding.
I live in the country.
But no, we really do, and Justin would be here tonight, but he needs to sleep. He hasn't stopped working for roughly sixty days. And so we are going to put something together and honestly, either late this week or early next week. And we'll, because we have the whole email list of the people who, five families and then the, everyone else who's currently on that update list. We're trying to keep everyone in the loop as much as possible.
He's doing a great job.
Yeah.
But the consensus is that somebody else, the builder's not getting it, and which I found out that's really not the case.
All right, you can look at the carbon copy, he's on there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to call everybody out in the middle of all of that because that's not how I do things.
Understandable.
But I do feel like if we could get these people all in one room, because right now they were just given an addendum to say, here's your options. They don't know. And if I was able to talk to them, I would say, you know what? If we can get a timeline, a real timeline, and say, this is what it looks like. Here's the end date around that time, I think people will feel better.
And it is, I mean, and you, you get it, being in the industry. It is a little difficult on some of those parts of this project, digging down forty feet.
Yeah, it's not good.
Thirty, so there's things that could take a little bit longer than others. However, the one thing about six months to a year, I, there, there's no possible chance of that. And as far as the certificates of occupancy, that thing is brought up, that the city would drag that out after the fact. The only thing left on the houses that are done being built, and then the city has not stopped anything from being built.
Yeah, I know.
That hadn't happened. Once, the only thing that would be left was approval for the CFO based off of hookup to sewer, and that would be done automatically because
Because of the, they're getting...
We wouldn't even have to go back out and do it again. It would just, and everything would move forward. But yes, we will work, I'll have, I'll make sure, Justin, if you're not on that email list, I'll make sure.
No, I'm not.
Okay. I'll make sure you're, everyone's notified. Because I do want to get everyone in here to
I think that would be a great idea.
Go through all the facts. I mean, I have a bunch of them sitting right here, and we could talk for hours on what's all happened, and, but no one wants that.
No, I agree.
Not tonight.
No, not tonight.
But no, we definitely are going, we're going to put something together either later this week or early next week and get everyone together, and we'll even invite the developer. We're not going to leave anybody out. But I just, I want everyone to be, you know, well informed, anyone who might not be on that email list on the updates. And, yeah, it's...
Can I give somebody my email address out there?
If you could fill out a form right there, we can, we'll have it.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
And thank you. And thank you. Thank you very much.
Ian O'Malley.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I am actually the husband of the wife who is pregnant in the neighborhood, soon to be, and so I'm sure you can imagine the emotional roller coaster that we have been through in the recent days. First off, I want to say thank you for shedding light onto what has been communicated and who has been involved, I think that's where most of our frustrations stem from, is not knowing who exactly knew what, so I appreciate you shedding light on that. If I could just throw a suggestion into that meeting coming up, which I appreciate you doing, I think what would put our minds at ease a little bit is knowing that maybe if this section is repaired, to my understanding, it's about a seven-foot section that has been affected, if, if we could find out, maybe moving forward, other sections, are those going to be affected down the road as well? I know you don't know that for certainty, but more so has everything been done to know that, okay, if we choose to stay in our home in a year, two down the road, are we then gonna have to move back out of the situation happening again?
I wouldn't think so, I mean, I mean, everything, all, all of the infrastructure is inspected, there's, there was a subsurface issue that caused that, so, you know, unless, those are, those are things that we just can't predict.
Yes, sir.
You know, the ground moving or something like that, we can't predict any of that. So is it possible? Yes. Is it probable? I would, personally, I would say no. You know, that, that could happen anywhere at any time.
Yes, sir.
It could happen at my house, it could happen at any, you know, so I don't, I don't see this particular one as a, as a precursor to other ones, you know, or even that that is saying that that area is, is more susceptible to that than any other area.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
I will say also, because I, I asked the same question about three weeks ago, because I'm like, okay, how do we know that this isn't gonna, and I got a really long engineer explanation, and then Justin dumbed it down for me a little bit, so then I understood
As I say, I'm sure I would understand that to a T, so
And then we're going through everything on, on the fix that they're going to do, and actually, one of our guys actually asked, because part of the joint in the pipe that they're putting in is a lot heavier and bigger than anything that we normally do, and he, he asked what was the, the purpose of it, and it is to pretty much make sure that if the, if a void opened up below what we're doing right now, it would hold it all together.
Yes, sir.
So they are taking additional steps, you know, we've seen it happen under roads and other areas where, in a lot older infrastructure, where there'll be a leak in a pipe or something like that, and that caused the ground to erode underneath it, and then it drops. Usually it's not, again, not on a pipe that's less than a year old and, in a new development, but, you know, hopefully the, the steps that we're taking in this solution with all the additional stuff would definitely keep it from, from happening, and we even looked at and discussed future inspections after this, just to, just to double check. So they're looking at that, some of them might get a little, little costly if they have to go drill every time they want to see it, because that may not, we hit to cause an issue if there's not one. But, you know, just like Mr. Colvin said, it could probably, it could happen to anybody, but hopefully the, the brand-new line that's bigger than what was in there and stronger
Right.
Would keep it from happening in the future.
Totally understand, and I appreciate that, and I think that's where my concern comes into play as well, which you just touched on, is continuous searches and things like that, where, you know, we're expected to make a decision on what we want to do with the house in this amount of time, when we've known about it for this amount of time, and then if
Yeah.
Continuous improvements are having to be done, and we're having to move back in and out, and in and out with a little one and everything, that's where frustrations would then mount, so I look forward to the meeting, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we don't have anybody else currently signed up. If you would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, feel free to do so at this time. And just make sure you fill out a card with Beck.
Sorry, first time.
Well, welcome.
Mayor, Council, thank you, my name's Ethan Edwards, I'm a Realtor, I represent a client in that same neighborhood. I, you've touched on everything really that we need to know, Mike, and that's great, they were setting up a meeting. My question was, he, the developer mentioned that there is a bypass possibly for the sewer line, but the city wasn't allowing us to use the bypass. Can you elaborate anything you guys know about that?
Yeah, I know a lot about it, actually.
Awesome.
So I started that conversation with the developer, and we were looking into it, and it was to bypass for five other homes, and the current homes, because I was under the impression that those five homes had already closed and were supposed to be moving into their home and didn't have anywhere to go. We continued that, in that conversation, I believe, until the sixteenth or seventeenth, and then the developer came in and met with Mr. Lyles, and the, everything that him and I had talked about went from five homes to every home in there. The only, not the only problem, but the main problem with that is there is no reason to put a whole bunch of other people in the same situation that five families were currently in, and we typically only negotiate in good faith. When things change mid-negotiations, good faith goes away.
Sure.
So that was when it was, it was decided it was in our best interest and the best interest of anyone that is moving into the neighborhood or is currently in the neighborhood, that we just do everything we can to get the issue fixed as fast as possible.
Okay, and you, I think you mentioned that you don't think this is gonna drag out for six months, it sounds like they're making
No.
A lot of progress on it already.
Yes. I mean, it, one part is, is, you know, there's no, there's no company out there that does this type of work, and the multiple different kinds, that's just sitting there waiting for a phone call, so, and you get it.
Sure.
And so finding people that could do it, and they could do it fast, even when we had someone committed to doing it, we were calling other companies to see if anyone could do it even faster. So everything takes time, then once they agree to come down, we work the contract, and lawyers are involved, no offense, Mike, so that adds time, and then they have to bring all their equipment, get set up, and so, you know, it, it takes time, but no, not six months, we, I, I wish I could save
Sure.
Six days right now, but
I don't expect you to put, you know, a timestamp on it. And then my last question, just to clarify, and maybe you can help educate me on this, when a developer develops a neighborhood, and I asked the developer about this, but when a developer develops a neighborhood, they, they have the sewer and the streets and everything put in, at what time do they turn that neighborhood over to the city versus, is it when the last house is finished, or is it before permitting buildings and sites on the developed land? When, do, is that a clear?
Yes, no, so I actually, I was actually looking into this, this morning, and a lot of cities are different, some are, some are within a year, some are within two years, but based off of my experience, especially here in Nixa, if a, you know, say it was your house that they were building there, and the lumber truck comes in to drop off more lumber, and goes over the curb, breaks the curb, breaks the sidewalk.
Does it city or the developer?
City doesn't fix that.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's still on the developer while they're developing the property.
So in your opinion, until the neighborhood
Totally, my opinion, yes.
Is finished development, it's still on the developer to finish?
Yeah. I mean, you could, that's one thing that you could probably argue all day long, but this is, this is new, because we've never had a
And it sounds like it doesn't matter who's footing the bill in the end, it's still getting fixed now, who gets the bill in the end is
And that was the decision on August the fifteenth.
Okay.
By the city, was I didn't care whose fault it was, it could be nobody's.
Sure.
But we had people who were gonna be out of their home, and that's unacceptable, so we were just, we fix it and figure that, the money part out later. If we have to cancel some projects, then that's what we do.
Sure, yeah, sounds like a plan. All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I already asked you that, so you probably don't have anybody else. If anyone else would like to speak about anything that is not currently on the agenda, feel free to do so. All right, if not, I will go ahead and close the visitors section, and thank you all very much. All right, next up, we will start with our first readings. Mrs. Coffey, please read Council Bill 2025-33.
First reading Council Bill Number 2025-33, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, calling an election to be held on April seventh, 2026, to submit to the qualified voters of the city, a proposed amendment to Section 3.6 of the city charter, authorizing the city clerk to do all things necessary and convenient to submit the proposed amendment to the qualified voters of the city, and providing for the enactment of said amendment if approved, presenting is Assistant City Attorney Mike Mace.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of Council, I don't think I'm gonna cause trouble right now, but
We'll see.
Because we are trying to be responsive to something that you have asked for, and that is to propose a change to the charter for filling vacancies on council. As you, as you know, right now, if the vacancy is going to last more than a year before the next election, there has to be a special election called, and I think there was a consensus that that might not be the best and most efficient way to deal with those vacancies, and after your discussion with Mr. Woodman last time, we have submitted this council bill for your approval to send to a vote of the people to change the charter. What, the change that this would make is that if there is a vacancy, council fills that vacancy, and then the appointed council person then stands for election at the next municipal election, so that we're not having to call and pay for a special election for a term that might be just a matter of a few months. Again, the, that's really the only change in the charter language, the proposed ballot language, which is fungible, is contained herein, but what we're really suggesting to you is, and asking for, is your approval to send this to the voters, which has to be done on a charter change. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No questions from Council, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this, do so at this time. All right, and I will close the public hearing. And just to give everyone an idea of what we're even talking about, if an individual, one of these great people happens to step down for one reason or another, there's a certain amount of time left in their term, we have to pay money and have a special election. That adds additional cost that is really not necessarily needed, so this would give the Council the ability to appoint someone for the remainder, for that portion of that term until the next municipal election, when we already have things on the ballot, and it would be a lot cheaper. So that's the goal of that. Anything else from Council? Great, nothing else. We will move on. Next up, we will be reading our second readings of ordinances. Ms. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-28?
Second reading Council Bill Number 2025-28, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, annexing approximately ninety-six acres of real property generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of State Highway CC and North Cheyenne Road, zoning portions of said property to the single-family residential R1 zoning district and the general commercial GC district, and amending Chapter Two, Article Two, Division One, Section Two Dash Twenty-Six of the Nixa City Code, presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gabby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. So this is gonna be a little different than the last time, this is specifically on just the annexation portion, the preliminary plat is the next agenda item, so this will be a little abbreviated. So this is for the annexation of approximately ninety-six acres, it is at the southwest corner of Cheyenne and CC. Ninety-three acres approximately will be zoned R1, two-point-seven acres zoned general commercial, and this will be added to Council District One, just repeating what Ms. Coffey said. The surrounding land uses, primarily to the south is single-family, to the east is also single-family and also undeveloped acreage over there, and to the north is also some single-family and some undeveloped property, to the west is primarily Wicklow subdivision, or elements of the Wicklow subdivision, to include a multifamily zone piece of property, which is the, the senior lit, senior housing, the Castlewood Senior Estate Living Facility, that's the word I was looking for. The other portion, there is some general commercial over there, which is for the, the Wicklow Pool and Common Area, but the rest is primarily single-family. So this property is located within the Tier One planning area, which again is an area where the city expects to be able to provide urban-level services, which is adequate utilities to an area within at least one to five years on average. It's not necessarily where we currently have services, but it is where we think we could potentially provide adequate levels of service. In Nixa 2045, which is our new comprehensive plan, we do have what are called priority annexation areas, so this piece of property was not identified as a priority annexation area, so therefore it wasn't giving a future land use either, so typically the future of the priority annexation areas are areas within our cities where we can fill gaps, little enclaves or holes, the Swiss cheese portion of our city that we got all these little holes in, those are kind of the priority annexation areas where we have utilities all the way around it, and should be able to provide adequate levels of service to them. So again, this was not part of that. A transportation impact study was conducted for this piece of property in 2024, at that intersection of Cheyenne CC, no improvements were necessary there due to that lighted intersection being able to handle a lot more traffic than what currently flows through there. Cheyenne and CC are primary arterials, the necessary right-of-way is shown on the annexation plat, it would conform to those corridor standards for a necessary right-of-way. Sinkhole evaluation was performed in 2024, identified nine, nine sinkholes on this piece of property, there's also a portion in the southeast corner of this property that is FEMA floodplain, so any development adjacent to these areas will require to comply with current city regulations related to sinkholes and floodplain. The electric is proposed to stay with the current electric provider, so the City of Nixa would not be providing electric there. Sewer is available in the area and is of adequate size to support the proposed development, and that's the next agenda item. There is concerns with the ability to provide adequate levels of water service in this area, there is known water issue, water pressure issues in this area, as identified by a lot of the residents in the Wicklow subdivision, so with how it is being proposed for the water infrastructure to be developed in this area, it goes against what staff received as a recommendation in the technical memo dated March nineteenth, 2025, from Olson, so staff has concerns that if it is not developed to the stand, the recommendations from that technical memo, then it could negatively impact the existing customers in that area. This agenda item did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission twice, the first meeting was August fifth, it was voted to be tabled, as there was additional information provided at that meeting that was not received beforehand, so it came back on the September second meeting with additional information from the developer with additional information from the developer and as well as from staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted three to two to recommend approval to city council. This property is compact and contiguous to current city limits. It does meet the application requirements found in Section 101-152. Due to the water infrastructure concerns, staff does recommend denial of this application. If you have any questions, I'm available. If they're too technical, I might pass them off.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If no questions, I will open up the public hearing.
Lynda White.
Good evening. Mayor, city council members. My name is Lynda White and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my husband Rick and myself. We live at 878 East Galway Court in Ennis Carey subdivision, which is part of the Wicklow development. This is not the first time I've spoken on this issue because we care deeply about the future of our city and the safety of our community. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the proposed annexation of the land located at the corner of Highway CC and Cheyenne Road, known as Moore Estates. Both the city of Nixa's professional staff and engineers, after months of research, have recommended against the annexation and a full denial. Their findings are based on serious infrastructure concerns, particularly insufficient water pressure in northeast Nixa. Residents in the area have experienced documented low water pressure for quite some time. This is not just inconvenient, it's a public safety issue as several fire hydrants in the area also have inadequate pressure. The city's own engineer studies have made it clear. A 16-inch water line with a loop system must be installed for the annexation of Moore Estates to move forward. Anything less will not provide adequate pressure or flow for existing homes or new developments. The City of Nixa is already experiencing significant growth within the current city limits, including Meadows Apartments, 240 units, Clover Hill, which will be 52 homes. This is 292 new residential units recently added to an already strained water system. The city cannot continue to expand without first strengthening existing infrastructure. Now, the city is considering annexing Moore Estates, which would add 233 more homes and a commercial piece of property, even though the city's own engineer has stated the current water system cannot support it. Another major concern, Moore Estates plans to connect to City's, Nixa City Water, but not Nixa Electric. Instead, they will use Liberty Electric, which is approximately 30 to 40% higher than Nixa Electric. If the land is annexed into the City of Nixa, it should be required to use all city utilities of Nixa, not just the ones convenient for the developer. Allowing their arrangement to, allowing this arrangement is unfair to future Moore Estate homeowners, who will end up paying much more for electricity. It is also unfair to the City of Nixa, which will lose revenue from the property they are going to annex. As I have said before, the developer is looking out for his own best interest, not the best interest of the City of Nixa, its current residents or future residents of Moore Estates. At a previous city council meeting, the developer's attorney stated that it was worth the risk to the City of Nixa to allow a 12-inch water line. But I ask you, risk, is that what the taxpayers of Nixa are paying for you to do to take the risk with our safety, infrastructure, and our tax dollars? This is a risky growth, growth without a foundation to support it. So I have a few questions, please. Number one, does the City of Nixa currently have the funds to fix the existing water pressure problems in northeast Nixa? And if so, how?
We've looked at the water project for that area and I believe we're looking at budgeting that in 2030? Is that correct? Because the tower in that area, well, right now, the lowest bid we got on a water tower is a little over $8 million.
So we're looking at 2030 before the water pressure would improve in our area?
2030 would probably be the design, the engineering design, and it'd be well after that.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. If there are no funds available now, how will the city address the added strain on the water system if Moore Estates is annexed?
Possibly take away from another infrastructure project that we're working on.
Okay. Thank you. Why would the City of, why would the City of Nixa annex more land when the growth we already experiencing within this Nixa city limits cannot be sustained? By approving this annexation, the city would be adding to an existing infrastructure problem with no clear plan or funding to correct it. You did outline the time, so that helps a little bit. Thank you. The responsible and forward-thinking action is to require the developer to install the 16-inch water line and loop system before any annexation or development occurs. On behalf of the taxpayers and residents of Nixa, I respectfully urge the council to stand with the city staff and its engineers and the people hired to protect our community's best interests and to vote no on annexing Moore Estates until proper infrastructure is in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
You're welcome.
Julie Tobash.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Julie Tobash. I'm said developer. I just wanted to, I mean, we gave you guys a really large packet to read, so I don't know if you read through all of it or not, but I just want to reiterate exactly what Olson said in their water study. It was on their recommendation where they said that a 16, alternative one was a 4,4,900-foot of new 16-inch water line along Cheyenne Road. And alternative two is 4,900 feet of new 12-inch water line along Cheyenne Road. And then when you go to their chart on page 15, the difference between the two results in one PSI. One PSI difference in water pressure. So under recommendations, they say of the two improved, improvement alternatives evaluated, both provide adequate minimum pressures and available residential flows within the potential development. Improvements in both alternatives increase the minimum pressures seen in the development and throughout the area of interest, which can be beneficial for lawn irrigation pressure requirements. Both alternatives provide greater redundancy and available flows to the entire northwest, northeast portion of the Nixa proper system. However, alternative two provides an alternative flow of 2450 gallons per minute at the corner of Highway CC and Cheyenne. And that's the corner of commercial. It's the two-acre commercial lot. This does not meet the recommended, key word there, recommended, available flow of commercial areas, but may be acceptable depending on the specific water needs of the city and any potential commercial development. Alternative one can be, provide a higher available flow than alternative two at the corner of Highway CC and Cheyenne Road. However, benefits in minimum pressure and minimum available flow at minimal, are minimal. So they're basically saying it's, there's a minimal difference. The only difference is, is that commercial fire flow. So your code states you adopt the international fire code. It doesn't say your minimum is 3,500 commercial fire flow. That was a recommendation. So, you know, a two-acre commercial property is probably going to have like maybe a gas station. It's not going to demand a really big use. So we did have Olson prepare what your current fire flows are in the whole city. So I'll provide this to whoever. But if you guys were to look at that map showing where your, your fire flows are in the city, if you look along 160 where most of your commercial developments are, and especially south of Highway 14, you don't have 3,500 commercial fire flow where most of your commercial developments are now. It's, it's just not attainable in most areas unless you're directly underneath a water tower. So I would just beg you not to set a new precedence for commercial developments to have a 3,500 commercial fire flow because I think that will single-handedly destroy future development for a commercial. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. I'll be brief. I spoke before. You heard what I had to say. I'm impressed with Ms. White. She's quite the advocate for the other side in this case. Maybe Mr. Woodman should think about hiring her to work for the City of Nixa.
Budget constraints, not yet.
Right, 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 right. In, in any event, she did say that I said, and I did say that it would be worth the risk for the city to, to do this. I think she may have taken it out of context just a little bit because I was talking about Clayton Hines' testimony to you in which he said that if the 12-inch line were installed, that it would lead to higher water pressure for the existing development. And if the water tower is not constructed until 2030 or later, then this is the only opportunity to increase the water pressure between now and then. There was no testimony, you didn't hear any testimony to suggest that Moore Estates would take away water pressure from the existing developments. Nobody said that, neither Jesky, Olson Engineering, or certainly not Clayton Hines. And those are the engineers that spoke to you and gave you testimony about that issue. But that's not really what I'm here, I, I just want to remind you of a couple of things. Mr. Gaby told you that this proposed subdivision meets all the criteria of the city code. It does. The annexation is a voluntary annexation and all the, he told you that all the requirements for annexation have been met. They have. The developer in this case worked with city staff to meet all those criteria, including Clayton Hines. The only issue is this 3,500 gallon per minute requirement for a commercial lot. So all of the testimony you've heard and the technical memos that you've received, it's really interesting about the parameters and the gates or the flows and if I close this or I increase that, the model changes, et cetera. You don't really need to evaluate that. What you need to be asking is how did the 3,500 gallon per minute requirement get in the initial model that Mr. Jesky prepared in March of 2025? Where did that come from? Because it didn't come from your code. You adopted the international fire code. It's adopted and incorporated by reference in the code. And I can tell you that the international fire code has a minimum of 1,500 gallons per minute for a commercial lot. That's what it says. I just want you to be clear about that before you vote on this, that your code does not say 3,500 gallons per minute. It just doesn't say that. So if you want to know whether it meets all the criteria, it does. Mr. Gaby told you that. If you have a question about the 3,500, then ask it of city staff. Where did it come from? Why is it in there? It should not be in there. As Ms., as the representative of the developer told you, it, Ms., okay, Julie.
Tobash.
Thank you, Tobash. I couldn't, I was saying Julie, Julie, Julie. None of our current commercial properties in Nixa have that GPM. So, and that's not, that's because it meets the, it's not because it's violating city code. It does comply with city code. So all we're asking here is that you pass this because it meets the city code. It's not going to make it worse. According to Mr. Hines, it's going to make it better. And by 2030, if we have a new water tower, all of it will be better. So it is worth the risk. I'll say that one last time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Eddie Jackson. I am Fairhaven Homeowners Association President, which is directly east of the annexation proposal. Our, we have 96 homes there in Fair, Fairhaven. We are under somewhat limited water pressure as well, as we said here. That's one of our concerns with this. The other concern is, I don't know if you've been down Cheyenne Road. There's an elementary school there to the south, Nixa Elementary, Nixa Intermediate. And if you're going down that road at 8:45 a.m., it's bumper to bumper traffic. It's the same way in the afternoon. I don't know if we have the infrastructure to build more homes in Cheyenne Road being able to handle that. I'm on it every day. And so we're concerned about that as well. The other thing from our, from Fair, Fairhaven Association, we're very concerned about the type of housing that may be going in there. Is it going to devalue what we have currently at, at Fairhaven? So as a Nixa city resident, I think we need to relook at what we're looking at, at this piece of property, which is directly across the street from Fairhaven and to the back of Fairhaven. And we have 96 homes in there, as I said. And I'm representing those people that they are concerned about what's going on there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Just so I'm not misinformed, parts of Cheyenne Road are city and parts are county, correct?
Correct. It goes in and out, yes.
Okay. The Swiss cheese that you were speaking of.
Correct. And to clarify, Fairhaven, they're, they're on the Ozark water system.
Okay. Okay. We don't currently have anyone else signed up, but if you would like to speak on this council bill, feel free to do so at this time.
Kristin Kennedy, 877 East Galway Court. Mayor, council members. As you debate and consider this proposal, I urge you to prioritize the well-being of Nixa's existing residents and taxpayers over the developer's request to cut costs. The approval of Moore Estates as currently proposed would be detrimental because it represents development moving forward before essential infrastructure is in place. While this property is in the Tier 1 category of Nixa's comprehensive plan, this specific plot is not part of the city's refined selection for near-term annexation, as Scott was saying. The critical fact is that the city has no active desire or requirement to annex this land. The developer is the party requesting annexation and therefore the developer is the party obligated to meet the city's requirements for infrastructure, not the other way around. The most pressing concern is water infrastructure. The city already knows its system struggles on the northeast side and city planned upgrades are five to seven years away. Since the developer is choosing to build now instead of waiting for these upgrades, the developer must install proper infrastructure that does not further compromise an area already experiencing strain. City staff made it clear they do not accept the developer's water study. The developer's model uses parameters known to predict values higher than what is actually observed in the field, presenting a misleading picture of the system performance with smaller water lines. Staff have adjusted their model to reflect reality and the developer has not accepted those adjustments. This is simply a question of risk. This is simply a question of risk. The developer has proposed the minimum acceptable design based on their own flawed model. The developer assumes zero risk. The city and its taxpayers incur all the risk. If the infrastructure fails, Nixa is responsible for fixing it. It is illogical for the city to assume this risk when it is not required to annex the land. The developer, as the party requesting annexation, must mitigate this risk by implementing a design that the city feels is appropriate. Finally, the developer's traffic study is insufficient. It focused solely on the single intersection of Highway CC and Cheyenne Road. Anyone who drives on CC knows that this is the least concerning intersection. The study completely neglected surrounding stretches of Highway CC, which connect to areas already experiencing significant traffic issues. Residents of surrounding neighborhoods already struggle to pull out onto Highway CC from locations like Old Castle Road, and the 400-plus additional vehicles expected from more estates will most certainly worsen these conditions. It is very difficult to understand how a responsible decision regarding traffic impact could be made without a larger, more comprehensive study. I support development in our city, but we cannot accept any development that lacks proper infrastructure. Growth should not come at the expense of existing residents. Council members, Mr. Mayor, please reject this proposal until the developer provides an infrastructure plan that meets the city's risk tolerance and is consistent with the staff's recommendations. As a taxpayer and resident, I implore you not to accept this unnecessary risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. I will leave the public hearing open if anyone else would like to speak on this. Nobody else, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. I do want to thank the council for all of your continued questions to staff on this development and every other decision that you get to make tonight. Your engagement has been amazing. I appreciate you guys. All right, any questions from council or any further discussion? All right, if nothing further, I will accept a motion to move forward with a vote.
I'll make the motion to vote.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Kelly Morris.
No.
Darlene Graham.
No.
Aaron Peterson.
No.
J.R.T.s.
No.
Zern Vess.
No.
Sean Lucas.
No.
With six to zero, the noes have it. Council Bill 2025-28 is not approved. And with that vote, I will accept a motion to table Council Bill 2025-29 indefinitely.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A first by Ms. Graham, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
J.R.T.s.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
And before we move on, we will take a quick 10-minute recess. All right, next up, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-30?
Second reading Council Bill Number 2025-30, in ordinance of the council of the City of Nixa, amending, approving the preliminary plat of the subdivision known as Cobble Creek Fourth Edition, which is generally located at the south, in, at the south of Cobble Creek's second and third additions, along with South Ozark Road, and authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions upon filing of the final plat, presenting is city planner Brendan Justin.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. The site for Cobble Creek Fourth Edition is located immediately to the south of the completed phases of the Cobble Creek subdivision. If you're not familiar, Cobble Creek subdivision is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Old Bittersweet Street and Ozark Road. The subject property was originally annexed in 1994. The preliminary plat for the entire Cobble Creek development was approved in 2000. Development has proceeded rather slowly and in phases since that time. The most recent phase was completed in 2017. If you could go to the next, the first map slide. So, here's the Cobble Creek Fourth Edition. It would be served by public roads, municipal water, municipal sewer, and municipal electric, all of which are extended to the ends of the stubbed-out streets in order to serve the final phase of Cobble Creek subdivision. Utility easements have been provided where required by code. There's a sewer line at the south end of the property that we're working with the surveyors and the developer just to ensure that that sewer line is within an easement. It's pretty close, they're trimming some trees and stuff, and we're gonna, we're gonna locate that line and make sure we have the easement acquired for it, and they seem amenable to that, so. All the municipal services are sufficient to serve and readily available in the immediate area. And if we can go to the next map, it's the, this is the utility lines, where you can see the, the ends of the roads, they're all stubbed out. The sewer line along the south is in the green there. You can see it kind of jogs to the north. We're just making sure that that sewer line stays in a sewer easement in case we ever need to do any maintenance work there, so. You can go to the next map, please. Should be done, yep, there you go. So, this is the proposed preliminary plat. There were no significant changes to what was originally proposed in 2000 to the design of this phase. Due to the lapse in time, the reclassification of Ozark Road, and the changes in development standards since 2000, staff felt it was appropriate to have the fourth phase reapproved. The approval of this preliminary plat would create 74 buildable lots that would be zoned R1 for single-family residences, and one non-buildable lot that would be intended for stormwater detention, it's Lot 222 down in the southeast corner. There's an existing lift station in this area, and staff worked with the developer and surveyors to kind of cut that off out of backyards and just include it in its own, its own common area lot, as opposed to keeping it in the backyards. So, Lot 222 would be dedicated to the homeowners association for maintenance. Stormwater for the entire Cobble Creek development was designed to be retained in three areas, Lot 89 and Lot 101. In the second addition, you can see Lot 89 on the far northwest side of this, that's stormwater detention. And if you're familiar with the neighborhood, north of the pool, there's another retention pond, and that, that's Lot 101, so. And then Lot 222, which is, I mentioned before, which is here in the fourth addition, so. There's one new access point proposed by the preliminary plat that would be added to Ozark Road, which is along the east portion of this map. A traffic report from 2000 predicted approximately 10% of the daily average trips generated by Cobble Creek would end up using the third access point. For a little bit of background on this, Elegant Road was extended and connected to Old Bitter Street. That happened in 2011 as part of the Richmond subdivision development to the east of here. These developments triggered the reclassification of, of Ozark Road to become a secondary arterial road, and it's because of this reclassification that we are requiring a traffic study for the new access point, and we don't really anticipate any, anything major coming out of that. I think the any, anything major coming out of that. I think the counts are low enough that it, it should not need any major significant improvements to that intersection, so. All public infrastructure, including roadways and sidewalks, are to be constructed to Nixa's technical specification standards, which are sufficient to accommodate pedestrian and vehicular traffic, as well as for emergency response vehicles. The land subject to the preliminary plat is within the current service areas of the Nixa Fire Protection District, Nixa Police Department, Nixa Public Schools, and it would be added to Council District Two, any of the new residents going in there. A public hearing was held at the September 2 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. No community members approached the commission. A representative of the applicant approached the commission to make himself available for questions. The commission had no questions for staff or for the applicants, and they proceeded to vote five to zero, with one absent to recommend approval to, to City Council. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat and has determined the document to be in conformance with the applicable regulations of the Nixa City Code, specifically Sections 115 and 117 regarding major subdivisions, the approval process, as well as the dimensional and density standards within an R1 zoning district, and staff recommends approval of this as well. And we're here if you have any questions for us or need to just go back to any of the maps or anything, so.
Brendan, I do have one question. Is that additional entrance, was that added since the last time we presented this? Cause I don't recall seeing that before.
It, it was on there, yes. I think I talked about it before as well, but we kinda did some research on it and found that the reclassification is what kinda triggered the, the traffic study, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? There is water.
We have good pressure there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this extension to the neighborhood, do so at this time. Fair enough, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions from council? Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
First by Mr. Vess, a second by Ms. Graham. Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas.
Really? Called me first? Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
JRTs.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Motion carries. All right, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-31?
Second reading Council Bill number 2025-31, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the mayor to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Program Supplement Agreement. Presenting is Street Superintendent Jeff Russell.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This council bill tonight I'm bringing to you is simply a change in name of funding for the Cheyenne Trail Project. Originally, these were coming from transportation alternative project funds and are now being taken from state transportation block grant funds. There is nothing, absolutely nothing changing as far as our 80% that we're receiving from the federal government from this project. Our percentage is still a 20% match for this project, and so for that, I recommend approval of this supplemental agreement.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I will have you guys know that Mr. Russell has a new pen, and it actually has a fidget spinner on it, so he shouldn't be clicking a pen anymore. He'll even show you how it works.
I actually received three or four of these from.
I grabbed a couple too, just in case you lose them.
We're so proud of you.
All right, no other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything further from council? Fair enough, I will accept the motion.
So made. Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
JRTs.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Motion carries. All right, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read the final resol, or ordinance, Council Bill 2025-32?
Second reading Council Bill number 2025-32, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, adding Section 16-272 to the Nixa City Code for the purpose of adopting a prohibition against falsely representing a city employee or agent. Presenting is Assistant City Attorney Mike Mace.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, this is a second reading that Mr. Woodman brought to you last week, or last meeting, and explained that it kinda fills a hole, and it comes up because we've had complaints about people going around and representing themselves door-to-door as the representative of the City of Nixa, and people need to have confidence that their government, people that come around to say that they're part of the government really are. They need to have that confidence in us. And if I can take about two minutes, I think I can maybe give you a little more background on this. Last year, we worked with Ms. Coffey to overhaul some of the business licensing regu, code sections to put in a requirement for people to have solicitor's license and to put some restrictions on door-to-door sales. That's how we ended up getting the complaints about people going door-to-door claiming that they were with the city for some type of electrical issue and so forth. Last Thursday, in court, we prosecuted two of those fellows, worked a plea agreement with them for going around door-to-door without a license. They understood that what they did was not right. We were able to do that because you gave us the tool to accomplish that. Right now, if someone goes around without a solicitor's, or with a solicitor's license, but says that they are with the Nixa Public Works Department, and we want you to know about this product and so forth, I don't have a tool. And so what, what we're asking for is a tool to help protect the citizens of Nixa. If you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, we would urge and support passage of this.
Any questions?
So our workers don't have any kind of a lanyard or anything that shows that they're employed by the city to wear?
They have city badges, just like, just like what you have, and.
Yeah, we have city badges, and this is a way when people have someone come to their door, say that they're with the city, they get information from them, and then contact us to follow up on that. We can gather information to, you know, at least, I don't know if we can put a stop to it, but we can at least let them know that that doesn't fly here.
I have one more question then. If someone comes in and gets a solicitor's license, do they just get a piece of paper that shows that, or what? Cause I have them come to my door all the time, and I always ask if they've gone and gotten a solicitor's license. Oh yeah, sure, but it's with that guy down the street. They don't have anything on them. And I, I don't talk to them then, but I tell them they're supposed to have it with them. So do we have any kind of a thing that identifies them?
I'll respond for that one, Mike, if you don't mind. So when a person comes in to get a piece of paper from us with my signature on it that says they are a solicitor, they are given strict instructions, they must keep that on them at all times when they're going door-to-door. So if you have somebody knocking on your door and they're unable to produce that, then they do not have a license with us. If they say that friend down the road has it, that is incorrect.
I just wanted to clarify that, cause that's what I thought, but I didn't know if we gave them something like that.
No, it'll be real. It'll have my, it's not a stamp, it's not printed. It's my physical signature. I sign every one of them, so I know that they know that it's real.
Maybe you should put a stamp on their hand, like.
Thank you, Mr. Mace.
Thank you.
And one of the things that is comforting to the citizens is if they had that, they have gone through a background check. And so it's, it's very thorough, and the Communications Department's done a good job of putting that out there to make sure people ask for it. Appreciate all of you guys for getting this together, cause it's not good. All right, no other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this matter, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything further from council? Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
JRTs.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Motion carries. Moving on to the resolutions section, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution 2025-46?
Resolution number 2025-46, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa consenting to the mayor's appointment of Ethan Ives to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Goppi.
Mayor and Council, good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been a member short since May of this year. The Appointments Committee met September 29, 2025 to interview five potential candidates, or consider five potential candidates, as one was not available to be there. After deliberation by the Appointments Committee, Ethan Ives was selected. He, the term for the commissioner that resigned was due up in November of this year, so Mr. Ives will start a new four-year term starting November 1 of this year. It'll be his own term, but staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I need a pen with a fidget spinner.
I have one in the office. All right, no other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on my appointment of Ethan Ives, do so at this time. I will close the public hearing. I would like to thank the committee for your work on this. I saw the names. I knew a decent amount of the individuals, and I know that was probably not an easy decision. There was some very, very good candidates. And I actually know Mr. Ives personally. He's a great guy, and I think he'll do an amazing job. So I appreciate you guys very much.
It was a tough decision. They were all good.
Yeah.
There was, yeah.
It was a good group.
A lot of good discussion though, too, so.
Anything further from council? Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Ortiz.
Yay!
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. All right, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution 2025-47?
Resolution number 2025-47, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract in an amount not to exceed $15,000 with Ozark Transportation Organization for a traffic study for the extension of Primbrook, Pembroke to Route 160. Presenting is City Administrator Jimmy Lux.
Mayor and Council, before you and I, as Becky mentioned, is a resolution allowing the city to enter into a contract or agreement, or MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, which is a little different term than we normally use, but it's just an agreement between the City of Nixa and the Ozark Transportation Organization, also known as OTO, as we refer to them. For many years, the city has identified the need to extend Pembroke from its current location to 160, to provide another access both east and west through the city. Currently, Pembroke ends just to the east of Truman Boulevard currently, and we've always eyed the opportunity of bringing that on through and provide access onto 160. There's also currently a potential development, 190-acre development that's being evaluated currently that would necessitate the need to bring Pembroke all the way through to 160. That development, potentially, conceptually at least, includes some single-family, potentially multifamily, as well as commercial and retail. So again, that would necessitate that extension of Pembroke. The agreement would allow OTO to expend funds to do that traffic study that would be required, also not just by the city wanting that, but MoDOT would also require that traffic study to be completed to provide a great access point onto 160. So this agreement would allow that study to move forward, would require a 20% local match by the City of Nixa. The study's expected to cost anywhere between $50,000 and $75,000, so this agreement does have a not-to-exceed 20% match for the City of $15,000. Though of course, that would be worst-case if it were to cost $75,000. This is the possibility it could cost less than that, but that, that would be the worst-case scenario. And then I will also mention that the city currently does have the funds available to make the 20% match out of unexpended professional development line item that we have, or professional services, I said development, but professional services line item that the city currently has in administrative fund. But I will be coming back to council in the near future and asking for permission to pay for the 20% match instead out of our economic development reserve account, which we have set aside for just this type of scenario, where we might have the opportunity to help future economic development. We have the funds to do that. Again, that's in a reserve, currently a reserve account, so I will be coming back and asking council to allow us to utilize those funds. But if council decides not to utilize those funds, I just want to assure you, we do currently have the funds in the current budget to make this study, or continue to allow this study to move forward. But I am asking for approval tonight, so that the study's not delayed, and so that we can get some information both for the city and for the future development opportunities there. So if you have any answer, any questions that you might have.
Any questions? You know, this is something that we've looked at for a, quite a while, for many reasons, honestly, from an economic development standpoint, and also a safety standpoint, possibly alleviating some of the people that are pulling out at Roseville, where we do have accidents often, so. I think this is something that is definitely beneficial to the city. So thank you, Mr. Lyles. No further questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this resolution, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything further from council? All right, nothing further, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, a second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. And the final resolution, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution 2025-48?
Resolution number 2025-48, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to apply for and accept grant funding in the amount of $152,500 to fund a portion of the purchase of body-worn cameras for the police department. Presenting is Police Chief Joe Campbell.
Mayor and Council, the Department of Justice has opened a grant opportunity through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, which will provide funding for the implementation of body-worn cameras. This is a matching grant that will cover up to 50% of the cost of implementing a program for body cameras. Currently, we're considering budgeting for this in the 2026 fiscal year. The department has decided to apply for this grant to help cover the substantial cost of implementing such a program. The grant has a maximum award of $2 million. However, our estimated cost, five-year cost for implementing a body-worn camera program for our department is approximately $305,000, which means the grant could cover up to $152,000 of that amount. The body-worn camera proj, uh, project has been a requested capital improvement project for many years. However, budgeting for these large-scale product projects, it's usually quite a bit of a tremendous impact on our police department budget, and the funding sources for such projects obviously are scarce, as we all compete for the same monies. This grant would make the implementation of a body-worn camera project affordable and a reality. The staff of the police department recommends approval of this resolution so that we can apply for and ultimately accept the DOJ body-worn camera grant. You have any questions?
I do. I know we're talking about budgeting for next year. I'm assuming there'd be no cost to this until next year, or is this something that would be implemented, will we find out, like, will we have the grant in a month and be able to start processing it then?
Yeah, so it's a very competitive grant from my understanding, and so I don't know what our chances of getting him, but we certainly won't get it if we don't apply.
Sure.
So how we're approaching that is we are gonna budget for the full amount for fiscal year '26. It's gonna be, it's a five-year project, or it's a five-year, yeah, five-year project with a total. with a total of $305,000, so you'll just divide that by the number of years.
Sure.
But if we do get the grant, we're looking at up to 50% of the cost being covered, so that would reduce the amount of money that we would pay for this implementation by.
Do you know when the grant would be awarded?
I'm sorry?
Do you know when the award date is for the grant?
We don't know that for sure. The federal government works on a fiscal year of third quarter to third quarter, so it's opening, it just opened, and it will be closing in about a week, and then they'll make their determination. So I would imagine we would get, maybe possibly get notified by the end of the calendar year for it, and then we would have through the third quarter of next year to implement. Any other questions?
I would say, C. Chief, I knew if I waited long enough, you'd find the money somewhere.
Yeah, we're trying. We're gonna, we're gonna try to get as many grants as we can.
I appreciate it. Good work. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this grant, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything further from council? I will accept a motion.
So made.
A second?
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Ms. Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I as have it. Motion carries. Anything further from staff?
Mayor, Council, just a few community events left for this year, but I wanted to bring these to your attention. The first one will be October 24, which will be a week from this Friday, is our Halloween Spooktacular event at McCully Park from 5:30 to 8:30. Should be a fun event, lots of activities and things for the kids, dress up. Mayor, I expect to see you dressed up, but I hope to see you guys there. And then we've got all of our Christmas fun. December 5 is the mayor's tree lighting ceremony. That'll also be at the community center. We've got an ice skating rink coming this year, and some activities, some giveaways and things like that. And then the Christmas parade is December 7. That begins at 2 o'clock from the community center and then follows the city's parade route, ending at the junior high. And so just a lot of fun coming. I'll be able to remind you about the Christmas events coming up, but I won't see you again before the Halloween Spooktacular.
How does the tree light?
The tree lighting begins at 5. It runs from 5 to 8.
Thank you, Mr. Graus.
All right, and I think Jennifer has a reminder.
Just a reminder, next week, 6 o'clock budget workshop, dinner will be provided. It's the most fun night of the whole year.
It's like Christmas. And I'm Scrooge, so. Apparently so, actually.
Then the last announcement I think we have is from Doug.
Yep. I wanted to mention something else that happened at our MPUA conference. The membership of MPUA voted to place Jason Stutzman as a member of large on the Missouri Public Water Council, and also voted was, Travis Cossey was voted for on the, as Vice President of the Missouri Association of Municipal Utilities, and he will also serve on the Board of Directors of MPUA.
That's awesome. I'm excited.
Good job. Those events are always really, it's very eye-opening to see other cities throughout the state, at those and other municipalities throughout the United States that really look at NIXA and how NIXA is doing things. We're definitely, definitely doing something right, so thanks to the leadership over there at Public Works. Anything further from staff? Anything from council? All right, Mr. Peterson.
I move that council go into closed session under Sections 610, 021, 3, and 13 of RSMO. I also move that this closed session, records related thereto, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under Sections 610, 021 of RSMO, and that the city council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second. First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
JRTs.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.